Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our workshop session on the 11th of September at City Hall, down in the chambers of the council, and at 6:33 PM. I hope I got all that right, because I'm in a time lag here. So, we are going to talk about a lot of very interesting things, but we first should call to order and see if we have a quorum.
Okay. Alderman Ludwicksen?
Here.
Alderman Dola?
Here.
Alderman Masser?
Here.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Here.
Alderman Williamson?
All right, we have all five Aldermen. All their people present. Who else is here tonight? Michael, why don't you start?
Michael Ducharme, Director of Finance.
Peter Falconi, Assistant City Administrator.
Darrell Taylor, Assistant Director of Building.
Mary Morgan Adams, City Clerk.
Joe Wade, City Administrator.
John O'Driscoll, City Attorney.
Karen Schulteis, Deputy Clerk.
Al Stuff, Chief of Police.
Dan Rich Tivitt, City Treasurer.
You're here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. If the Chief would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Joe, what do we have tonight?
All right, Mr. Mayor. First item of business is approval of the minutes from the August 28th, regular council meeting. Any additions or corrections? And if not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have no presentations tonight, Mr. Mayor, and no appointments, confirmations, and proclamations. Madam Clerk, do we have any citizen concerns?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Either who would address, Mr. Mayor, or Joe?
Go ahead. We're listening.
On the appointments, I know we've had applications for the Open ZBAC seat. Is that going to be at the next meeting? Are we going to be appointing somebody? I know Marcus sent in his application.
We have, before I left two weeks ago, we had three to consider, and I will do that in the next day or two and see what we can get done before or at the next council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any citizens?
So, we had a motion. Did we approve it?
We approved that.
Right, and we don't have any citizen concerns and comments?
Which brings us to staff elected officials and commission reports. Any reports, Mr. Mayor?
You know, my concerns are one of the things we're talking about tonight, so I'll leave that until then. I have really nothing to add, other than I think our prayers, wishes, whatever, for the people, my friends in Palm Beach called me, and they said they got through it all right, but their damage is high. Their Lehigh swimming pool cover, screen, and roof blew away. He said, "That's the worst of it, and I can handle that." So, there's a lot of people hurting far more than that, and certainly far more than we are here. So, hopefully, everything will turn out all right. There's talk of another storm coming now that's relentless. And I had hoped it was the Keys next year sometime. That probably won't be possible, because they got blown away. So, our thoughts are with the people that are there, and we wish them speedy recovery, and the hurricanes go back out to sea somewhere, out to the ocean. So, thank you for that. Who's next?
Alderman Williamson?
I have no report at this time. Thank you.
Michael?
No report this evening.
Peter, you have a couple of items.
Yes, sir. Thank you. As the elected officials may remember from their packet, the staff has gone through and all the proper channels with the local records commission of the state of Illinois. We are going to tackle the 800-pound gorilla in the room, or at least in the one storage room we have. We have about 50 boxes we're able to get rid of. The state of Illinois highly regulates what municipalities can get rid of, destroy. We applied for a destruction permit, or certificate. Thankfully, we received that certificate, and we are looking at probably next week, where we're going to get rid of a bunch of old administrative and financial documents that the state has approved for us to destroy, so that we'll get rid of a lot of the clutter that I know the mayor has, in at least the two years I've been here, has wanted us to get rid of. So, that is going to go forward, and if anyone has any questions about that, we'll be more than happy to answer those questions. That's the end of my report.
Peter, congratulations. It's been a tough job for seven years that I know about. And we thought it was solid. Most of us thought it was gone. Well, obviously, it wasn't.
Well, it was definitely a team effort, and I'd love to give a shout-out not only to Karen Schulteis, our deputy clerk, but also to our new finance team. This was pretty much delayed because of the finance material that we had. We needed the financial expertise, the eyeballs, so to speak, who knew what they were looking at to make sure that we were in compliance with the state. And Mike Ducharme, Sherry Grayfan, and I think even Laura Lera, and Laura Batten, and there was another gentleman who came temporarily to help us out as well. They did a fantastic job, and it was a long time coming. As far as I know, we haven't had a destruction in over four years. You said seven years. That's probably closer to it, sir. So, this is something that all municipalities do on a regular basis, and it's something that we will continue to do going forward.
Thank you.
Darrell Taylor is filling in for Dan Peterson.
No report at this time.
Thank you, Darrell. Alderman Masser?
I just wanted to mention that on Apple Drive near Milwaukee, a portion of the median was removed, and it was restriped, and it has been a tremendous help to traffic flow over there. So, I wanted to thank everyone in Public Works and Steve Perez for getting that done, and to inform everyone that Apple from Milwaukee all the way to Burning Bush is scheduled for milling and resurfacing in 2020, so the entire road will be redone then. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Look, Morgan Adams?
Just wanted to remind everybody to get their tickets to attend the Taste of the Town at Wheeling Prospect Heights. It's a great event. It's going to be bringing all our favorite restaurants from both areas and neighboring communities. True feast to the senses, over 25 fabulous food service establishments will be on-site, and it's going to be a wonderful event with entertainment and a lot of fun activities. So, I'm hoping everybody will come. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 on September 28, 2017, and it's at the Westin Hotel in Wheeling.
Mr. Mayor, the only report I have tonight is this past week, we received the final disbursement check from the dissolution of the Old Town Sanitary District. All total, all their assets have been distributed among the communities, and the check to the city of Prospect Heights was $8,908. So, you get a sense that they were running on empty.
Joe, excuse me, did that include the sale of the condo?
Yes, sir. In fact, they waited until that sale was completed, so.
When was it coming, though?
Seventeen, I think. Was that right? Down from 65, yeah. Talk about a haircut.
To place that in context, we're also starting to do some work to organize things for the first effort of managing the sewer system is to televise it, to identify the areas that might need work, where there might be structural issues or such. Place that in context, the engineer's estimate for that is about $400,000. So, we'll be working on that in the near future. And those are the items I have to report tonight.
Joe, is that for the entire sewer system?
Yes. Yes.
Because we went with the 10% startup, and now this is the rest of it.
Right.
Thank you. Moving on, who we have? Karen?
No report, Mayor. Just one thing, though. As a native New Yorker, today's 9/11, and thank you to all the police and firemen who came through for New York, and sorry about all the innocent people that New York is still suffering from that.
2,900 people in one blow. That's very sad. We have Alderman Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mayor. A week from tomorrow, the SDC will hold its monthly meeting. There are two items on the agenda. The presentation about review and streamlining and making the budgeting process more efficient and more effective than it has been in the past. And the second item is will be a presentation, status and progress report from Jim Tenaglia on the project dealing with the town center. I attended the McDonald Creek Commission meeting, I think it was last week. And at that point, it was reported, but they didn't have any substantial evidence, that there may be something going on with the creek as it relates to the Park District, in the sense that there had been some reporting from other people along the creek that things may be, like vegetation and grass and stuff like that, maybe being dumped into the creek, and perhaps even some of the pool water was being released through the creek. I don't know how we can look into it. If there is something there, we should look into it and actually find out what's going on. The report was through the Park District. I asked the members of the commission if they had some physical evidence of it to supply it to me at this point. That's it.
I have no report, but I would also add that I have a number of relatives that were in the path of the hurricane. Fortunately, they are safe and sound, but the road to recovery for a lot of people is going to be a long one, so our thoughts and prayers are with them, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Ludwicksen?
I have no report, but it's something I just remembered now, and if I don't bring it up now, I'll forget to send the email tomorrow. But I'd like to ask Mike if he could look into anything that you think might be coming up for January, because, you know, January with payroll and things that we do accounting-wise is a big date. And the one thing that made me think of that, to bring that up, is our 125 plan. We do that internally. I don't know why we've done that internally instead of putting it out to a third-party. I mean, even the smallest of companies use a third-party person where the employee logs in, and I just noticed that we're always paying, you know, checks out, reviewing those bills. I'm not even sure that we really should be doing that 125 plan in-house nowadays with all the rules that go along with it. But anything else like that that you can think of that you might need the council's consent for to do January 1, since we're getting to that time?
I'll take a look.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief Stefan.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I'd like to recognize is the passing of former Alderman Thomas Merle, 86. When I first started here, Mr. Merle was an Alderman. He was one of the founding fathers of Prospect Heights. He was a practical man, and he really did exemplify everything that, well, the values of Prospect Heights. And he truly believed in the community, and we lost a great man, and I'd like to express my condolences to the family.
Thank you. Treasurer Tivitts?
Just a couple of things to mention. The Prospect Heights Library is having a celebration of their 60th anniversary next Sunday, from 1:00 to 4:00. If anybody wants to show up and make it, as opposed to watching the Bears game, they would appreciate it, I'm sure. And also, just to make note of the fact, if people didn't notice it in the E-News or on the cable channel, Comcast is beginning to collect the peg fee now, starting today. From going forward, their billing cycle will reflect the 35 cents a month per customer peg fee. So, in case anybody has any inquiries from your constituents, you'll know that this is in effect right now.
How often does that bill?
Once a month.
35 cents?
Yes, sir. That's all I have.
Thank you. There are no other comments, Joe?
All right. We have no items on the consent agenda for all business. We have a second reading of the ordinance establishing prevailing wage rate for the city of Prospect Heights as designated by the state of Illinois, and this is in response to, it's very recently, the State Department of Labor posted the new prevailing wage rate. So, this is a compliance ordinance.
I make a motion. We approve it?
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Masser?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Dola?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Brings us to new business. Item 11A is staff memo and ordinance for a special use permit for a sit-down restaurant at 5 South Wolf Road, Rubens Bar and Grill. This is, just has a recommendation from the Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals. The description of the request is a consideration of a special use permit for a 726-square-foot sit-down restaurant in the B1 retail business district, per Section 5-7-2C of the zoning ordinance, property commonly known as 5 South Wolf Road. And the owner is here tonight to present this matter.
Nobody here?
He's not here.
There's nobody here, so?
No.
Sorry. Okay. Oh, it was first reading anyway, so.
Yes. Question, 726 square feet meets the zoning code? For a restaurant?
Yes, it does.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir. Please.
Does the 726 square feet comply with the Illinois Gaming Regulations for video gaming?
First, it has to qualify as a restaurant, and then they have to get a liquor license, and then it goes to the state. Before that, the state isn't.
I thought there was a minimum square footage for video gaming. Does anybody know what that is?
I don't know what it is.
Joe?
I don't know. I'll have to look that up. Where'd that from? Previous discussions?
Mayor?
Yes.
It says in the memo from Dan that it's 955 square feet.
All right. 726 came from where, then?
It's from the, I have that from the minutes of the, yeah, I'm sorry, I have to reconcile that. Something's wrong.
I believe it is 950, by the way. That's what 726 is. Two bathrooms, basically.
Yeah, that's what it says here in the board report.
All right. Any other questions on this issue?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, it looks like the applicant might have, are you the applicant for?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions, too, just maybe comments. In Dan's report, he says that the, you know, obviously, these things aren't secret anymore. Everybody wants video gaming, so they open a restaurant and ask for a liquor license. That's unfortunately not the order that goes in. You have to open the restaurant first, but there was talk that in order to do video gaming there, there would be seats that would have to go away in order to make stations for the gaming, which would just lower the number of gaming positions available. One of my concerns, everybody knows my concerns. I've talked too much about them with the very small video gaming-only places that we have. But one of my concerns is, we say that you have to have 30 seats. It's 30 places of eating. I think the code is very, I think it's a little more specific than just saying 30 chairs in a building. They say you have to be able to seat and have 30 places to eat. And currently, as this is laid out, what they do a lot of times in the previous ones is they count chairs, they count love seats, and they say that's a position. I really don't see that as a restaurant, to say you've got 30 seats available, and eight of them might be, you know, couches or chairs or positions like that. So, I'm not sure they really meet the 30 based on what our code says is required for places of eating, to have a minimum of 30. The other thing is, I'm all for the restaurant. I don't want to deny the restaurant, but I don't know that it has to have a liquor. I'm more, I'd love to ask you some questions, if you want to.
Please step up. Identify yourself, and what is your connection to this whole thing? Are you the owner? Are you the financier?
I'm the owner.
All right.
My name's Ruben Abiles, A-B-I-L-E-S. I live at 1513 East Terrace Street, Mount Prospect. And I'm the one that's opening Rubens Bar and Grill. And for your question, you said about the 30 seating. I do have the 30 seating, but I don't have no couches or none of that. It's all tables.
The drawing we saw, it was part, I think, part of the package showed.
Yeah, but then we did a new one.
Oh, we haven't seen that one?
Yeah.
Is that part of the application?
Yeah, it was part of the application. Plus, they were also extending another washroom.
Right now, I'm aware of the washroom.
Yeah.
So, you're saying you have 30 chairs and tables?
Yes.
So, you could have 30 people come there and eat at the same time?
I have four tables with four chairs, and then I have by the window, another four chairs, I mean, two tables with four chairs. Then I have one in the middle that's got 10 chairs.
Okay. Okay. Can I ask what your background is, and where are you coming from? Is this another restaurant you're adding to your?
Well, my uncle used to have a restaurant in Chicago. I'm from Chicago. I worked for the Water Department for 28 years. I retired, so, you know, I'm just putting it up now to, mostly for the grandkids, you know, for college.
But I mean, the last place you had. I mean, did you operate a restaurant before?
Sammy's Restaurant.
Sammy's?
Yeah.
Where was that at?
That was on Dickens and Halsted. It used to be my uncle, and I used to run it, you know, there.
Okay. Do you have a lease right now with the?
Yes, I do have a lease. I have a three-year lease. And they have copies of it. I gave it to Mr. Peterson, the copy.
And is Mr. Stanko a partner, or is he just?
No, no. Mr. Stanko is not no longer there.
He's no longer there?
Yeah, me and my brother that's over there, that's, we go to the one.
So, he's not a part of it?
No.
There's no affiliation?
No.
Pat, anything else?
Typically, when we see these applications, there's usually a presentation. You're asking, let me start over. The only thing you need to come to us for is a special use for that place.
Right.
No parking, no building restrictions that you needed permission for, just that every restaurant requires to have a special?
Yeah, we have like five parkings there.
No, I know. I know. So, when you ask for a special use, there's usually a hardship, and I understand the restaurant's different, so you're not going to ask for a hardship, other than the fact that you want to open a restaurant, and you can't do it because there's no, you have to ask for this.
Right.
But typically, we see it with an applicant will show us a plan, you know, a business plan and whatnot. My concern is, you know, whether you're going to have a 30-seat restaurant and everything else, is you have a plan that says, you know?
Yes.
What you're going to do volume-wise, not a menu, I mean, like a business plan.
No, I did. I had floor plan. Yes, we did that.
Oh.
You know, for the business and all that, the seating and all, stuff like that.
If you don't get video gaming, let's say the mayor, or let's say you don't get granted a liquor license.
No problem.
You're going to open it? You're going to open it no matter what?
No matter what.
Okay.
I mean, I spend enough money as it is right now, so, you know.
Right. So, you're willing to go without the liquor?
Right. What is the type of food or cuisine?
One at a time. Are you finished, Pat?
Yes.
Okay. Who's next? Alderman Rosenthal?
What's the food and cuisine you're planning to?
I got tacos, chicken wings, cheeseburgers, hot dogs, sopas, you know, Mexican cuisine. And I'm also going to have, you know, like Coke, water, wine.
Okay.
But no hard liquor.
You're good?
I'm good.
Alderman Williamson?
I have no questions.
Who's left? Am I missing someone?
I have no questions.
Thank you. I was missing you.
I had just one brief question. It listed the hours of operation. Would that remain the same if it was just a restaurant without a liquor license? Because the hours of operation go pretty late. Would that then change, just as a restaurant?
Yes, I will have, yes.
The hours would change?
Yes.
Okay. So, it would be not open as late?
Right. Correct.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Alderman Masser, are you good, or you have a question?
I'm all good.
On your restaurant, you said Dickens and Halsted. I live down the street from Seminary Restaurant.
Yeah, I used to go to Waller High School. It was right there on Orchard.
Waller? Oh, I went to DePaul.
Yeah.
So, and that was right down?
Yeah, that was, that's.
That is one of the hottest areas in the city.
That was, I'm talking about 1970.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And then they had Cheetos, I don't know if you remember, Cheetos Pizzeria, right on Halsted Street. They had it. Yes.
You could hardly walk on Halsted.
No, exactly. But now you can't touch it up there.
And Dickens, without a million dollars in your pocket.
Exactly. You're correct.
So, good. But say it again. You don't care about a liquor license or video gaming?
Well, like I said, I'm trying to put the restaurant. If I could get the liquor license to serve liquor and all that, if I don't get the gaming, you know, it's a different story. But I still go on with it, you know.
Well, you can't have gaming without a liquor license. You must have a liquor license.
Well, I need the liquor license to serve liquor, you know, beer when people eat and all that, you know.
Any other questions?
Just to follow up, because I'm not sure you understood what you were saying. You said gaming would be something different, but you can't do gaming without a liquor license.
Right. Correct. Right. But I'm saying.
You said it would be different if you couldn't do gaming.
Well, if I don't do gaming and I do the restaurant, people come in, they want to have a beer or something, I need the liquor license to serve the beer.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
You said you'd be okay operating as a restaurant.
Right.
Without liquor license.
Yes, if I don't.
Then you said if you didn't get the gaming, you couldn't do it.
No, no.
Okay.
Mayor, may I?
I thought he said.
Pat, I think the point he's trying to make is, he was looking more for the liquor license to be able to serve the beer. If he had that and still wasn't able to do gaming, he didn't, you know what I mean? So, it wasn't like looking for gaming without beer.
Correct.
But he'd like to have the liquor with the restaurant, and if gaming didn't go with it, then he's fine.
All right. Anything else? This is a first reading. We had a discussion. Can we move on?
Very good. Next, item 11B is parking lease agreement with Camwell Edison.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You can stay there if you want.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk for my buddy here.
Why don't you introduce your?
No, here, my daughter.
Your daughter?
Had the baby and all that?
Oh, yes, right. I know who that is, though. That's, is one, the other one.
Item eleven B is parking lease agreement with Commonwealth Edison Company for commuter parking at the Prospect Heights Metro Station, fifty-five South Wolf Road.
Just a quick history, if I might. Uh, when we walked into the first administration that I was in charge of, uh, the payment was fifteen thousand dollars a year. They came back to us and asked for forty-five thousand dollars a year. We told them what we thought of them, and they backed, they did back off. And from that point on, they went into a program which, if we're going to keep the train station, we're probably forced to keep. And that's a thousand-dollar increase for every year. So at what point are we now, seventeen or eighteen?
Uh, it's about twenty thousand, I believe.
Up to twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're at twenty thousand. And what is the right to have raises, or is this a set price for a length of time?
It's a five-year lease with a set price, and then there's an escalation in the out years.
Okay, so we, we're twenty thousand for the next five years. And then they're back at the table and someone else?
Correct.
Will be there too from the city. All right, any questions on that?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
The copy of the lease that I received to review doesn't show as a twenty thousand for the next five years. Um, I think the copy of the lease I have is old, as it's, has dates which have passed. If we're going to approve a lease, I'd like to see a current copy of it if I could. I had sent some comments out to everyone before, since I wasn't going to be in town for the last meeting, which addressed some of those issues. But this, this new memo from, from Joe on this agenda with twenty sixteen to seventeen, eighteen, I just wanted twenty thousand, isn't what the lease reads that, that I have.
All right, are we behind in the final lease?
The one that was sent out with this packet is the, is the current one submitted by Commonwealth Edison. So, um, if, if, whatever you received in the packet is the correct lease.
Have we got a deadline to approve this? I mean, do we have to approve it tonight?
Oh, no, sir. I mean, their patience is waning, but.
Well, tell them they're going to have to wait till two weeks from now, or three weeks, whatever it is. If that's a concern, I mean, if we're signing something that doesn't say what we think it says.
Well, I can clarify that. The first year rent proposed, and that's actually a year ago, because we're in arrears, is nineteen oh sixty-three. Second is twenty thousand, third twenty thousand, fourth twenty thousand, fifth twenty thousand, sixth twenty thousand, and seventh is the twenty-one thousand.
Okay.
So that's the, that's the lease that Edison.
Alderman, I'm sure you understand that chart, but is that what it says in the document?
It's in Plan B.
As far as you understand it.
Yeah, you know what, I might need to look at this again. Um, I've received several emails with copies of the lease, and I didn't reprint it every five times.
You want to table this?
So, yes, I can see.
You know what, before we table it though, Mr. Mer, could we just, just discuss it? Because if we table?
Oh, yes, we can do that. But as far as signing it tonight, I think, uh, table order is in, in order. Go ahead, though.
Just a couple comments about it. Yeah, I, I do agree, it's a good, it's as good a deal as we can, we can probably get from ComEd. They're not going to do much more. The only thing I think we need to do is we need to go to Metro and, and before we sign the lease, you know, get Metro to do something. Because they, they have got to help us with this, because it's, you know, I mean, we're, we're spending upwards of twenty-five thousand dollars out of pocket. I know it, it shows that we lose fifty thousand a year on the train station, but some of that's depreciation, so it's not actual money. But we're still losing twenty-five thousand out of pocket, even collecting the, the fares. I drove through that parking lot this week. I don't think that parking lot's got a couple more years left on it before it's going to have to be resurfaced. So we're, and there was always concern, people said, well, if we cancel the lease, if we don't operate it as a train station, we have to remediate, whatever you want to call it, the whole property back to just ComEd's use, which the lease says we have to do no matter when we, when we would do that. Whether it be now, seven years from now, five years from now, we have to do that. It's a cost we have to absorb. So I think we really need to go to Com, or to, to Metro and tell them that they've got to at least make us whole. We're not looking to make money out of this, but we just, we can't keep going. Especially now, losing the money from the state with their budget changes and lose twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and have some big ticket items coming up that we're going to have to address.
The last go-around with Metro, when, uh, we went with Pan Mar and myself, we basically used a baseball bat. But the best thing we could get out of Metro was sixteen thousand. Now, is that the right number for cameras? They gave us sixteen thousand dollars for cameras. That's the best we could extract from them. Uh, I'm willing to do it all over again and try a new. You know, I threatened we're going to close the station, and we, we did all kinds of stuff. The best we got was them. And Metro head office would not meet with us. It was the mayor from, from the small city.
Community Affairs Director, Mr. Mack.
He's a, he's a mayor also.
Richard Mack, yes. Yes, he is a mayor.
A small, small city up northwest. You know, maybe we ought to go down to Metro.
Well, we can do that. I, just so council is aware, uh, I, after the last meeting, I sent an email and also a phone call to Metro. So I'm waiting to hear back about an, an appeal for assistance.
I asked for a new parking lot, and they laughed at me. And I said at the time, uh, what are you going to do with that lot? So you guys are going to have to restore it. I said, I can read, I thank you for that information. But what are you going to do with a lot that's not buildable, that's not saleable? There's nothing you can do with it. I said, I'll offer you a dollar for, for the parking lot. Of course, they thought I was ranting and raving, and I wasn't. I was serious. That lot is worthless to them. To them, it's valuable, because they've got their infrastructure underneath the parking lot. To a outright sale to a third party, it's worthless. So I'll try it all over again. And anyone that wants to work with me on it, you're welcome.
Yeah, we're, we're getting to the point almost now where if we just put up some concrete barriers and say, hey, we're not going to maintain it, we're just going to, you know, leave it. Metro, stop coming here, because we're not going to open the station.
There's nowhere for people to park.
At some point, at some point, I mean.
If I can add to what you're saying, Pat, it costs us four hundred and sixteen dollars for each person that rides the train. We'd be better off, you know, getting a bus and filing them in there and driving them. But, I mean, a hundred and twenty people per month use that train or park there. We have to recoup four hundred and sixteen dollars per person.
Well, I mean, it's, it's good ideas, I mean, good to talk about. I'd like to lease the other portion that's not being used, so that we can gain some income from that. Who would rent it, lease it, whatever? I don't know. Do we have the right to rent or lease it? I don't know. But there's a whole nice triangle land over there, the balance of the parking lot, that's blocked off. Maybe we could do something with that.
I know there's no easy answer, but we just, we keep going further and further down the road with it and, you know. If something doesn't change with the math, I mean, we, looking at it every year during budget time isn't going to fix it. So I, we have to kind of make a decision whether we're going to start to ramp it down. Maybe we declare right now to Metro, we're going to sign this lease and we're done with it. Just so you know, we're putting you on notice, here's a seven-year notice. We're done with the lot. You know, you can take the whole thing back, because we're going to save up two hundred and fifty grand or whatever it is to tear it all down. Let's see if they want to talk, but, I mean, we really do have to get to that point.
Well, you want to get to that point before you have to redo that parking lot for certain.
Well, when is the parking lot?
You've got a couple few years left of it, but it's.
Is there a few years left?
I think so. It's in terrible.
Yeah.
No, I thought you meant the, the lease.
No, no, the parking lot. The lease is up, like now.
All right, we'll put it on the front burner and see what we can do. In the meantime, I'm re-tableing the Commonwealth lease for the moment, for two weeks.
Sure, and I'll save all my other comments till then. But the deficit to the city that we've been talking about was one of the main matters that I brought up. But I'll save everything else after I can re-review.
At one point, the budget showed a five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but it did include depreciation, et cetera, of a five hundred and twenty thousand dollar loss. Up to the date that we looked at it, that was two years ago. So, I mean, this is not a good situation, no matter how you twist it or whether you could lease something out, yes.
A few years back, when we had the farmer's market there, did that bring in any income to the city? Or did we just provide space for them to set up?
No, we tried to open it up and let them have it for the first year and generate interest. The council at that point didn't like the idea of a farmer's market, so the whole thing was dropped. So I can't see, I, I know we got a Mont Prospect, and they get a lot of income from their, from their farmer's market. And it was a good point made, it was in the wrong location. You know, there's no weekend traffic there, no trains.
Exactly, there's no trains.
We had an offer at Prospect Crossings to put our farmer's market in there, which would have been a better idea. I said, why don't we put it right here in our parking lot as a small startup business? And the council turned that down. So I let it go. I think I love farmer's markets, I go to.
I do too. I'm, I'm just trying to think of ways to bring in something that would bring in.
Well, I say, maybe we can lease out that, that extra parking spaces we have. And we could do it, because we're seven years in to go anyway, but whether we have a prohibition against it, I don't know. If you get, make a note for yourself to check that out. Can we sublease a portion of the parking lot?
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, if I can make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
So where are we at as far as direction to staff? We're tabling it for now, we're letting it go for two more weeks. I think staff needs direction with council. What council wants to see two weeks from now?
Well, we want to clarify.
Are we looking for a conversation with Metro? Are we looking for a conversation with ComEd? Are we trying to renegotiate the lease, or are we trying to subsidize it through Metro? So what are we looking for Joe to do?
We're at the point that we want to verify what we think the lease says with written validation. And Alderman Messer has made some good points. The chart is exactly what we agreed to, no question about it. The increase over the five-year term. Agreed to, to the point that we haven't signed anything, but it seemed like it was a good solution. What it says in the actual document, let's prove that out, and that's what I want the two weeks worth. As far as Metro goes, we've got to keep working at it until we get something.
Well, you have.
I mean, there are some other changes.
We're going to be there for seven years, so.
Well, you're not there for seven years until we sign that lease.
I mean, there are other changes I think need to be made to the lease. Um, some of the provisions talk about, I think it was in section nine, I have a comment something about ADA requirements and stuff. So, um, I'll re-review everything, so we don't, I don't have to go over it twice and waste anyone's time, but.
I guess that's where I'm getting with.
I mean, my, myself personally is, I, I would not approve the lease necessarily as-is. There are other points that I'd like to discuss in the lease.
All right, so we have two issues.
For negotiation.
We have Metro and we have the lease. Let's get the lease at least ready for signature while we're looking at Metro to see what we can do there.
All right, and it's Joe to start talking with Metro over the next two weeks and getting ahold of him, and then setting up a meeting for you to.
Sure, absolutely. Please try talking to him.
Yes.
I mean, it took forever to get Commonwealth Edison here. So, yeah. Does that answer your question?
Not really.
Well, what's your solution, Pat?
I think we're part of the way there, right? But the direction to Joe, as the city administrator, is to open up conversations with Metro? I mean, help me out, guys. How are we going here?
Yes, sir.
As I understood what was said, and it's my interpretation now, is that there were some misalignments within what was in the document that we have in the agenda versus what's in the actual contract. And that needs to be reviewed and brought into line. The conversation then went to getting some help from Metro in terms of repairing the parking lot. I didn't understand that to be part of what has to be done to approve the contract going forward. The, the scope of approving the contract was dealing with the apparent misalignment with some, some of the text within the contract.
Let me, let me.
Going, and going forward with talking to Metro would be something that would go on beyond that.
The conversations between the mayor and Metro five years ago were about getting some restitution for a parking lot. The new conversation is long-term, what can you do to help us? Because right now, we have a deficiency of fifty grand a year.
Right.
So how do we reduce that? How do we minimize our long-term costs so that we're not subsidizing their business?
But that conversation is.
Every time, every month, when, or I'm sorry, every year when somebody rides that train, we're paying them four hundred and fifteen dollars.
I understand the numbers and everything like that, but as I understood the scope of what we want to do, number one, we want to get the, as I understand it, we want to get the contract aligned, so it can be, so it can be signed. Number two, beyond that, is to have a conversation with Metro as to how they can help us, which is not conditional upon signing the contract. Am I right or am I wrong with that?
Well, you're, you're right and wrong. I mean, yes, the reason I think you're right is because.
Mechanically, you're correct. There are issues with the contract that have to be fixed before we sign it. That's what Alderman Messer's saying. In, in what we think we should do, I mean, any contract that comes before us doesn't have to be technically correct for us to sign. It's a condition that has to be met, yes, but there's a bigger issue of why are we signing this contract in the first place?
Correct.
So you're right, the contract needs to be fixed, but where I think you're wrong is you're, you're saying that we sign the contract and talk to Metro. I think I'm suggesting, or I've heard, I think Scott has suggested that we, we really have to go to, to Metro to say, before we sign this now technically correct contract, we need to know what you're going to do for us, because we're not going to keep losing fifty thousand dollars a year. So it's a, it's a policy issue, but the detail part's going to be worked out in two weeks of the contract. So that, that's the easy part, is whether you want to move forward and tell the mayor to sign the contract, I think is the bigger of the two issues.
And just as background, because I think what you're alluding to is, is actually what we tried to do, but Commonwealth Edison would not allow it. And that would be for the City of Prospect Heights and Metro to meet with Commonwealth Edison.
But you don't have, we don't have to sign that Commonwealth Edison contract, though.
Correct.
We can just sit there and keep running under the terms of the last.
And we have.
Well, and Joe, do we necessarily have to have Metro meet with us and ComEd? Couldn't we work out a separate agreement between us and Metro as far as them helping us out? And if they agree to help us with that, then we would agree to enter into the lease with ComEd?
That was, that'd be Plan B. Plan B, Plan A was to have, have them sit down with us, because Metro probably holds a hundred or more leases. With, with Commonwealth Edison. So there was some leverage there. But we'll go to Plan B. We'll, we'll try that.
If, if that's the case, Joe, you answered some of my questions right there. Why is Metro not contracting with, with ComEd directly? So that's probably something we have to find out, is why won't Metro contract directly with ComEd? If they're doing it other places, if we're not, if we're deciding not to be in the business of providing parking and facilities anymore?
Oh, their leases are more for easements. They're, that's not actually, uh, station facilities or parking facilities.
Are they not allowed to?
But they did have some leverage.
Are they not allowed to do that, you know?
Well, Commonwealth Edison would not, did not want them to do that, so.
Tough.
Well, we'll go back, though, we'll go back to the door.
Tough for Commonwealth Edison.
Sorry?
Tough for Commonwealth Edison. There's a lot of things I don't want to do that I'd ever do, too.
Remember, you had the remediation problem. You can just shut the train station down. You want to do that? We won't lose four hundred and, whatever you said, per ride or something. We can shut the train station down. And the last estimate was not two fifty, Alderman Messer said it was like four hundred and fifty.
Quarter fifty-four.
To tear out the parking lot.
Parking lot, yeah.
To put the, the good weeds in there and restore the land. So this way, I think you had a great suggestion. Over the next seven years, we can use that. We can say, hey, we're going to save up our money over the next seven years, and we're done. Get it done now, and let's go from there. So the direction that you asked for, you've already given, and I think everybody's in favor of it. Right?
Yeah.
Joe's going to work on this, and.
Sure.
He's got the direction to go ahead and do it. All right, what's next?
Next item is eleven C, staff memo and ordinance for driveway variance at six ninety-seven Glendale Drive, first reading. And this is taken from the Plan Commission Zoning Board record. The application has been amended to request a variation, variation to encroach four inches into the required five-foot, or four feet into the required five-foot side yard setback for the purpose of constructing a driveway in the required side, side yard to access his rear yard, so he can construct a detached garage per section five dash six dash two E two A. And this is Mr. Pescucci of six ninety-seven Glendale Drive. And if you'd like to make your presentation, sir.
Good evening, council. I'm Joseph Pescucci, with my wife Gina and architect Mike. Do you guys have any questions?
Well, tell us what you're doing.
So, basically, we're looking to build a garage. The hardship for our variation is to build a garage to house my two thousand seventeen Ford F-550 work truck, tow truck. I'm required to drive this vehicle home for the purpose of a first responder and assisting the police department for the emergency towing recovery. My company, my father and I own Jeans Village Towing. We serve the Prospect Heights Police Department, along with four other local police departments. As first responders in the state of Illinois, we are required to get the calls within fifteen minutes in order to clear up the roadway and prevent other hazards from occurring. Jeans Village Towing is locally owned and operated business. We have two locations, Wheeling and Prospect Heights. We have two locations, Wheeling and Prospect Heights. We're looking to build this garage on the west side of our lot because it basically is next to a wooded lot that is unbuildable. So, that's basically what we're looking to build.
So, you're looking to build a garage because you're required to house a truck? You can't park it outside?
Correct.
Or on the driveway? So, it has to be enclosed, screened, or, or perfectly put in a garage?
Correct. And it's out of sight, out of mind where we're building the garage, so it's not in any way of any neighbors. It's also going to be used as a shed, and I'm a, a old car collector, and I would like to put some of my old cars in there. I also have a plow truck too, so there's other things that I plan on putting in there.
One of your neighbors complained that you will be turning on your emergency lights and siren the minute you pull out of the garage. Have you addressed that?
Yes, that is, there's, there's never been any siren turned on. I don't even have sirens on my truck. That was an accusation that he had made. Since myself and Dan Peterson had gotten on the same wavelength with everything, there was some type of a miscommunication, and the neighbor that was having these concerns, he is, he was under the presumption that it was going to be built as a third-car attached garage, so it would be basically right next to his property. We've come up with a different location, which is now going to be on the west side of the yard or the, the lot, and it's out of sight, out of mind because it's next to a wooded lot that'll never be built on, and again, it's in the backyard. So, there's really no, you know, no harm, no foul to any other neighbors. In terms of lights and sirens, that's, that's untrue. Obviously, I have two backup lights on the back of the truck that when you put it in reverse, they shine so that you can see around you, but never turned any, you know, flashing lights or any type of sirens. There's not even sirens on the truck, so.
My last question. Daryl, what was the approval by the PCBA? Did everyone vote for it?
Dan's been handling that project, so I did, for him, I believe.
Joe, anything?
I have that record. Ayes, Commissioners Kempa, DeGraff, Tamman, and Chairman Dash, and no nays.
Alright, so it's fully approved by the PCBA. Alright, thank you. Questions, please?
Can I make a couple of comments?
Yes, sir.
Joe and I have spoken.
Yes, sir.
I split a face with the name. And the PCBA granted the recommendation based on the fact that you were looking to encroach for a driveway to build a garage, not to build a garage to store a tow truck. That was never brought up and put on the record in the PCBA documents. The tow truck on its own is not in allowed use whether it's garaged or not, okay? Because your truck exceeds the plate designation despite the fact that it's exempt to drive on roadways. Excuse me. It's not exempt to our code. So, I, I hope you understand that, but-
I, I do fully understand that, and we've, Dan Peterson and I have actually, actually talked about the next step and where to go. So, one of the things that, it actually was listed in there as the work truck, because Dan was the one that obviously said that it had to be in there. So, the, the, the application had work truck in there.
Work truck and 20,000-pound tow truck are two totally different things. In our exemption-
It's not 20,000 pounds, but-
Our ordinance cuts off at 12,000 pounds, and in the application, I believe, or what Dan told me, was it was 20,000 pounds. So, what it actually is, I don't know.
It's, it's under 20,000. It's like 16. It's, it's a smaller-
Yet still over what we allow. So, therefore, the next step here would be go to a text amendment, okay? And that text amendment, and, and don't get me wrong, I, I believe that you would take that thing and you would put it in your garage, and all the trouble that you've gone through up until this point, you're not the guy that I'm worried about. That text amendment all of a sudden allows anybody to do it, and everybody else isn't going to be you, so I have to worry about the next guy too. And, you know, I-
I think you just-
Doing what I can now to try and minimize people looking out across the street and seeing other people's businesses, you know, just the same as you do now, and I'm trying to help you out just the same. You know, you don't want to wake up, look out your mo, you know, look out your window and see XYZ construction truck that has 12 ladders on it sitting across the street. You know, that's not what you move to. You move to residential neighborhood, not to a commercial space.
I understand that, and one of the things is, my business is, is kind of, it's not your normal business because we serve as a first responder. Obviously, our job is to get to a call as quickly as possible. When you have a four-car accident in the middle of Palatine and Wheeling Road, my truck's required to be there in 15 minutes.
I need to set you right there because we don't require you to be anywhere in 15 minutes.
In the police department, we have, in our contract is, we have a time stated as 15 minutes, almost all of our-
But is that part of your contract saying that you'll be in there 15 minutes? Because our requirement, if I correct, chief, is that right? We don't require him to be there in 15 minutes?
I have actually never seen an actual contract with any of our tow providers. We have three, and, and those were in place before I became chief, and I've never seen a copy of one.
Okay. I, I don't necessarily have an issue with the driveway. I don't have an issue with a garage. I have an issue with you bringing in something that violates our code. Not to mention, I have concerns about the garage. I mean, that garage is sitting in a floodplain, and from what I gather, you're going to have, what, eight two-by-two openings in that thing?
It's been designed by my architect-
Oh, feel free, please.
It's, it's a flood, a cross-flow, is the exact, should I state my name in? Mike Aiello, 1346 Pine Street, Glenview, Illinois. The garage was designed, we put eight flood vents on there as a, to have-
I'm sorry, you put what?
Eight of the flood vents on there, which are one, one foot by 18-inch openings.
One foot high or wide?
One foot high, 18 inches wide, which basically, it's the size of a concrete block. So, I'm sorry, it's actually 16 inches-
Or a raccoon or a grypossum?
Well, they're made, they're not like your regular, like a gridded vent. It's an actual louvered system, so-
It's a closed opening.
Well-
I mean, it's a protected-
It opens and closes, yes.
So, it has a louver on it that is a screen and-
It's a, the ones that we were planning on using are a little more advanced than just the, your typical metal screen that you would have on like a crawl space.
No, no, but it has a fixed louver on the outside and-
Correct, and then it, it actually, it would flip over in the case of a flood to let the water back out. So, it's a, it's a design for that. But the, we only actually need four of them, but because of the size of the garage, we, and making sure all the water were, were to be able to get out, is why we put eight in so that they're spaced out more evenly. As far as the floodplain's concerned, we've had Toblerone Associates, they went through and designed to all the floodplain ordinances. We've had a structural engineer provide calculations and design for the foundation of the garage, so everything is built so that it will last. It's going to be an expensive garage.
Yeah.
So, we're, you know, we're definitely taking every step to make sure that it's going to-
How far down do you have to go with the piers and stuff?
Got to go down 42 feet with helical piers. Yeah. Well, it's to where, the point where we did, we did one test pier, and that's where we got the capacity to hold the weight of the garage.
You're right, it's an expensive garage.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that's what he's, it's going to be well-built because of the cost, so it's not, I, I wouldn't be concerned about the structural stability of it. So, Gina's my, one of my cousins, so I'm not going to do something that's going to be a problem in the next 40 years.
I'm sure even if she wasn't, you'd do a great job.
We're planning on living there forever. I was born and raised in Wheeling. I've been involved in the community my whole life. She went to Hersi, so we've been involved in the community, both, all my businesses, my father and I's businesses. We're not going anywhere. We, we give back to our community. We're very involved in everything, so.
Okay, well, hey, my position on this, and I said this to you when I talked before, has nothing to do with a personal issue with you. It's just, it's, it's a gross violation of the current code, and knowing what I know, I can't be in favor of it, so.
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
Just to make sure that, I mean, I understand, I know about the text amendment being the next step in the process.
Yeah.
I just want to make it understandable to everybody that the variance is just for the driveway. The garage is an approved use, and then it's up to, you know-
Until, until the point where he said he was going to park his tow truck in it, and then that was entered into consideration. So, once that was mentioned, it, it includes the tow truck, just the same.
So, I think when we were at the, at the ZBA, we had said that the tow truck was not going to be until we went through the text and then-
It was never entered into, it was never entered into the discussion for the ZBA.
Right. That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there is also other things, like I said, I have a plow truck. I like keeping that there, and I've got old cars that I-
I got you, Joe. I, I understand it. I also know that a year from now, if it was my garage, I'd park my tow truck there, so.
Well, if, if it's not approved, then I-
But on the, on the other hand, your yard is two miles away. I mean, it's, it's a minimal hardship. I mean, it takes you an extra six minutes to go get your truck and get it, you know, get out of there.
In a snowstorm, it's more than that. It really is. Or if there's a blockage at Palatine and Wheeling Road where there's accidents pretty frequently, now I can't get through that intersection to get to my truck to perform a job, so.
That kind of, oh, go ahead.
Alderman Messer.
I was going to say, that kind of goes right into the question I was going to ask. Let's say, let's, again, I'm not against the garage. I think it's probably overkill, and I know codes, you know, what we require you to do is probably twice what needs to be done, which is how it is, but I understand that, but you're willing to do that, so I don't have a problem with the garage. But let's suppose instead of at Palatine and 83, a semi turns over instead of a car. So, they wouldn't call you. They'd call somebody who can-
No, we, we do heavy-duty towing too.
Well, how are you going to do that?
Well, we would have to fly to our shop and pick up our heavy truck, which-
But what, what about when your neighbor comes in and says, you know, I, I don't do cars. I only do semis, and I have to be able to get to the emergencies in 15 minutes. I got to park one of my trucks there. It's above your limits. Let me park, it's going to be a little taller garage. My point is, my point is hopefully-
I would never, I would never park it. It's 40 feet long.
No, you won't, but your neighbor will, who comes here and says, we let you do it, why won't we let him park his big wrecker there? And, and that's to Scott's point, is it's not yours, it's not your individual truck, it's not your individual garage. It's, it's the next guy that comes aboard the ZBA that comes to us and says, you let that go, why are you not going to let mine go? Now, now we've set a precedent to say, just come here and ask because we're, we're going to let you have it, and we, we just can't have that. And I know lately, we've been trying to crack down on the number, it's just been getting out of control with the number of trucks that are parking in driveways that aren't supposed to be, and it's just dangerous to say, okay, if you had three old cars you wanted to park in your garage, more power to you. But the problem is, is we know what it's for, and if we go ahead and approve that, what are we saying for somebody who comes to us to ask for something? You know, or if we say go ahead, but you can't park your truck there because we're, you know, we're about to start cracking down on that. It's not fair to you to say go ahead and build your garage yet tell you you can't park your car there if that's what the purpose is.
Well, one of, one of the things that we had talked about with Dan Peterson was a, obviously, a text amendment is something obviously lawyers and attorneys handle, but there was a meeting that we had with my lawyer who was there, and he had ideas of, and I, basically, an idea that could make it so that it's a tow truck and not like semi trucks, landscape trucks, trucks with ladders on it, you know, sprinters, whatever, construction truck and, and-
Right, but what's our bridge to get there? Our bridge to get there is to allow you to do it. Now, if I substitute Joe Smith who says, I wreck big trucks. I don't do little cars, so I have to have my big wrecker here. I want that same bridge to the text amendment. Why, you know, we, we can change it for you, but why wouldn't we have, why wouldn't we have to change, but why wouldn't we have to change it for the next guy? None of this has to do with your structure, none of it has to do with the zoning as far as the building itself. It's just that we're put in a position of knowing what's going there and, and-
And, and I fully understand your concern, and, you know, with the, with the heavy-duty thing, if you set it at 16,000 pounds, a heavy-duty tow truck is way more than that, so that would be something that would be impossible.
I know, but now I'm your neighbor saying 24,000 sounds good to me, you know? It just never ends.
I could ask a quick question. I mean, you're saying it's 16,000 pounds, but is the gross vehicle weight 20,000? Is that what's on the, is that what's on there?
The sticker on, the weight of the, the weight of the sticker on the truck is 16 and change. Now, I do have an even smaller truck, which is a smaller wrecker. It's a little tiny Ford wrecker, and that's, that's a little tiny tow truck. And that, I want to say, is like, I think it's like 14,000 pounds. It, it's slightly over your- But they, I mean, they, they do make the lighter duty that are, that would meet the 12,000, because we actually did look it up. But I think the point, kind of, the discussion that we're kind of having right now would be for the discussion that would be at the text amendment, correct me if I'm wrong.
This discussion that we're having now is because you brought up the-
Because it brought, okay.
Okay, now, that, that is now taken into consideration. Okay, now, the next guy, we keep talking about the next guy, and the next guy could get the exact same truck you've got, and not necessarily because he was as considerate as you were, you know, and you're, you know, trying to get through this, but because that just happens to be what he has, okay? And as we talk about this, the, the leading up to it wasn't good. I mean, your neighbor, you know, called me and lodged several complaints, and there's several emails and went back and forth, and then he sent me pictures of the truck sitting in front of your house with another car on it. And I know you explained it, but you know what? The evidence is there, and if it happens once, it happens twice.
I was bringing my cousin's car home so she could pick her car from my house.
I get it.
And he took a picture.
But, I mean, the picture's there, so, you know, I, I just, I can't support it knowing what I know.
So, when we, at the, at the ZBA, I thought the approval was given with the stipulation that there was no, there would be no tow truck. Is that not even-
The ZBA doesn't communicate with us. All they do is provide us with a recommendation saying, yes, we feel that what he's applying for, he or she is applying for on the surface, you know, we, we approve it or we disapprove it.
Sure.
Okay, and that's it. So, there isn't, it, it's not like, okay, well, it's going to go to council, and council's going to rubber stamp it. So, that, that's what brings us to today. And when the ZBA reviewed your application, the tow truck was not at all a component of it.
I don't, I'm not, obviously, I'm not here to argue or anything like that, but I-
Oh, it's exactly why you're here. Come on.
Well, I, I'm just saying that I know that that was in there because the, the initial application, I have a copy of, and it was exactly put as work truck, tow truck.
Oh, when I talk, when I talk to the ZBA, it's not-
It's not in the ZBA's, it's not what they do to regulate your use. All they're regulating, I believe, is whether it's something that's buildable or not, you know, just like when he comes before us for a restaurant and he wants liquor license and video gaming, that's not in the application for the restaurant technically, but that's where he's going. Once you get a restaurant, you apply for a liquor license, it could be video gaming. I just don't want you to get caught up in the, I mean, this is really a discussion we've been having for the past year about trucks parking in driveways and commercial trucks and whatnot. You just happened to apply for this at this time, and I hate for you to go through all this, and then we get done doing what we do with the deciding how we're going to handle commercial trucks parking in residential areas, and we say you can't, you know, we're going to crack down on it or make a change, and you're stuck with a garage now that you can't use, you know, for that purpose.
But that's one of the things that we've discussed, and I, I've made it clear to him, is, is it worth still building the garage if the tow truck is not allowed? And you're going to get tickets, you're going to get fines, you're going to get everything that comes with it if it's an ordinance. And he did say yes. So, I mean, that's, the other question I guess I have since now in, in the documentation of being a tow truck, should this get tabled until we apply for a text amendment? I mean, this was the process that we were told to, to go through. Yeah, we've, we've done every step that we've been asked to.
For final, this is first, this is first reading.
You were told you should have gone with the text amendment.
All right, could we, uh, mention that we have five aldermen here and two have been speaking? Who's next?
I have just a couple of questions. Um, how long have you owned your business?
Uh, we've been in business thirty-five years. It's, uh, two generations, uh, my father and I are the owners.
Have you always done the emergency calls?
Correct. Well, we started out, um, uh, Gene's Towing started out in eighty-three and Hints Road, if you remember Gene Standard. It was, uh, uh, Gene Di Bartolo, he's a distant relative of ours. Uh, he retired back in nineteen eighty-nine, and, uh, my father and I took over the company. I should say my father, I was a little young at that age. I went to college, uh, got my associate's degree in business, went to automobile school. Uh, we've got two body shops, one in wheeling, one in Prospect Heights, and we operate our towing company, and we do strictly nothing but police towing.
Okay, so you've done that for several years then?
Uh, we've been doing police towing for thirty-five years.
Okay, 'cause I guess my main question then is, if you've been doing it for thirty-five years, why all of a sudden now the vehicle has to be housed at your residence?
I lived in Arlington Heights before, and I had a, uh, basically, I was approved to put the tow truck there, and I had a garage that I kept the tow truck in, in Arlington Heights, and, uh.
They just bought, they just bought the house.
Yeah, we've, we've only lived here since November.
Okay.
It was December, November, right around there.
Okay.
So, uh, we just purchased the property, uh, my wife and I just had a little, uh, our, our second child, so we were our family. Thank you. And, um, we knew that we needed to get a bigger house, so we moved into Prospect Heights, 'cause we also wanted a better school district, uh, 'cause that's where my wife went to school, Mercy. So, uh, we, uh, basically, I mean, we've been involved in a community, and we wanted to move into this community, so.
Okay, that's all I had.
Alderman Rosenthal.
No questions. Okay, no questions.
Alderman, uh, Matt Dole.
Uh, no questions, thank you.
And, uh, Alderman Ludwicksen, anything you wanna add? This is a first reading, by the way, this is not an approval process. Nothing? All right, thank you for coming, uh, take heed for what you were told, and, uh, if there's some way to work it out, we'll try. We probably won't be able to work out some of the issues that were brought up, but thank you for coming.
Thank you all for hearing me, thank you.
Joe?
Uh, brings us to item twelve, discussion selection of topics for upcoming workshop meeting items previously listed, discussion of commercial truck parking regulations, review of city liquor code, discussion of intergovernmental agreement for Chicago Executive Airport, and discussion of Plaza Drive.
All right, so we have several things, we can probably talk about some of them, hopefully not all night. But, uh, item A, commercial truck parking. I know Alderman Williamson has been touring the neighborhoods, because people call me and say, "Who is that guy?" But, uh, I tell them, "You're an alderman, and you're doing your job." So, you put this, or I have wanted this on the agenda, and you've talked about it many times, so lead off.
Um, I've been working with Director Peterson as well as Mike Brzicki to revise and craft the updated ordinances. We're not the air, we're not quite there yet, I'd say we're getting very close, we probably have it done a month from now. But it primarily is everything that we had discussed, where we're limiting signage that's on trucks, um, gross vehicle weights, classes of, you know, nothing that would require a zoning or a code enforcement officer to have to start measuring things, they're kind of blatantly obvious and, and rather general, so.
So, you're working on it?
We are working on it.
Okay. A prognosis coming soon?
Prognosis is, um, probably about a month from now we'll be done.
Okay. Thank you, anyone else on that issue?
I have one question, I'm not sure who could answer it perhaps, uh, Mike Brzicki. Do we have any ordinance, ordinances that prevent, um, not just trucks, but equipment itself, such as, uh, snowplows, detached plows, landscaping equipment, stuff like that, that is just stored outside, sometimes they throw a tarp over it?
Yes.
There are?
There are.
Okay, because that can be as unsightly, if not more, than some of the trucks themselves.
If a, if a snowplow is not on a truck, it has to be stored out of sight.
Okay.
Um, as well as all landscaping equipment, anything that pertains to a business, you know, needs to be protected from the side yard or further, just like commercial truck. I mean, the commercial truck is treated as a piece of equipment.
Okay, thank you.
I'll add something, that Mike will write tickets on anything he sees, like, and he has been writing tickets for that.
If you ask him, I mean, he typically has photos of this stuff, so if you've seen it, you've probably seen it.
The conversation we've just had, is that going to be involved, that, that's your revisions involve anything with, with what they're talking about?
He doesn't currently qualify anyway.
I'm sorry?
He doesn't currently qualify anyway. The last applicant?
Well, yeah, well, what I'm saying is that, is, are you gonna be making any changes reflective of what is there? Or is that some out of the scope of what you're doing?
No, I'm not making any changes that would impact him, because he's, and we're actually looking to tighten the restrictions, not loosen them, and he's already outside of the current restrictions.
All right, anyone else? Alderman Ludwicksen?
Nope.
All right. Thank you, the next issue, Joe, is, uh, review of city liquor license, liquor code. I will say this, Kevin, our attorney, Kevin Kearney, our attorney, uh, sent out, uh, another copy and indicated in his, uh, introductory portion of what he sent, that no one has responded regarding the liquor code. I don't wanna be unkind, but I don't think it's, uh, totally correct to have one alderman decide what the liquor code's going to be. Not that you wanna do that, Alderman Ludwicksen, because, uh, you invite people to respond to. So I'd really like everyone to look at this thing and, uh, come up with some questions, like we did tonight on several of these items, uh, before, you know, I get overly involved. As a liquor commissioner, I want something that works, but as the council, you're something that you vote. So, uh, I would encourage you to read it again and come up with some questions. Or come up with a memo and say, "Hey, this is great, I like it." So any comments for that? Yes, sir?
Sir, I did read it, and I like it.
Thank you.
I think it's fine, but, uh.
I agree.
I didn't know we were supposed to respond.
Well, I mean, he said, "Do you have anything to add?"
I, I didn't have anything to add.
See, I see this document.
I don't think we had issues.
Well, I see this document as important as the budget. And, uh, if, if it is, or if it's close to it, I think we oughta delve into it a little deeper than no response. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I reviewed it, I didn't have any comments, I didn't see anything that it, that I found objectionable about it.
Okay, Alderman Dole?
Uh, I too read the document, um, I apologize for not responding, but I too didn't see anything, uh, that I would want, uh, to see changed in it.
I'm just amazed there are no questions, no comments, no, "I'm happy."
Oh, you haven't got to me yet.
Well, I know, you have, you wrote the darn thing.
No, I didn't.
You edited the darn thing.
No, well, I've worked with, with Kevin on it.
Yes, good. All right, so I think that's still an open issue, if I could say it that way.
But just before people take this home and read it between now and two weeks from now closely and decide if they like it more or less, there's, there's, just to explain it a little bit, there's really two parts that were changed in this. There's the base part of the liquor code itself, which talks about how we require people to be trained to do it, to sell liquor, and then there's the classifications. Part, the main reason that I first started looking at it was, is that we had so many different classifications. It's just like anything, over time, you keep amending it, you add one thing, you add another, and then it doesn't look like it originally looked. So, as far as the verbiage when it comes to making the changes that we require BACIT training and, and the technical parts of it, outside of the actual licensed classifications, I think everything is, is good now. I think what we need to talk about as a council, I think the policy part, is what kind of, um, licenses are we going to have? What those hours should be and whatnot, so. There, I did catch one mistake with this, or issue that needs to be addressed, um, if, if you wanna look at the classifications. Or actually, I'll just point out a couple of things. On the third page, on page seventy-nine, this is what people use when it comes to getting the liquor license, as far as being a real restaurant and, and really being a restaurant for the purpose of being a restaurant, is that we talk about the thirty people minimum in order to get a liquor license. I would add something there, it talks about having capacity of, of having, uh, tables for thirty persons for food services. And I, I would add to that, that we need to have the ca, that that restaurant needs to have the capabilities to be able to take care of thirty people, not just have chairs and seats, they've gotta be able to really be a, a place that can handle thirty people. They talk about offering their patrons meals, too, it should be those consistent with that of a restaurant, not just a meal to say, "Here's some, you know, peanut butter and jelly sandwich and a bag of, uh, chips, therefore it's a meal." So this, this way, I think we can kind of get away from people using Prospect Heights as a way to get to video gaming through our restaurant, or through our liquor code. The other thing this does is it kind of ends the four o'clock licenses in the actual ordinance. We say that if you are licensed as of the time that this has passed, you can keep your license, but we're not looking, don't, don't come and ask for a four o'clock license anymore. Uh, you have to be one of the two that are already there, which I guess you're able to do. You're able to have that kind of restriction going forward to say that we're not gonna have it, but any future council can change their mind and amend the liquor code and add right back.
Twice.
Um, this kind of changes the hours too, just looking at the classifications now. It takes it back from a two o'clock weekday to three o'clock weekend to a, um, one o'clock across the board unless you ask for a late license, then you can go to two o'clock seven days a week. We have people that have three o'clock licenses that don't need them, I know it's not a big deal if there's no trouble, but I think we just need to be consistent in the hours that we have and, uh, and how we operate with that. One of the other things that's missing in this is we do have beer and wine only as a restaurant, which, which, um, Kevin didn't pick up on that. So we need to change the A license to have a, uh, maybe an A-one that says beer and wine only instead of all alcohol. And, um, other than that, if everybody's okay with the times, or if they have any comments on the times, that that's really the only thing we need to discuss is the hours of operation and the license fees.
I do, I do have one, one question, but I'm gonna hold it.
Get rid of all that.
How do you get a late license?
A what?
A late license.
You have to ask for permission from the mayor.
Is that a, uh, another license or a extension of license?
It's kinda like an extension of your current license on good behavior. Somebody comes in and operates, that's how I see it. They come and operate for a couple of years, they ask, "Can we have a late license?" You know, you've had no issues, you.
All right. I have something after the meeting that bothers me a little bit. So, uh, let's do it for two more weeks, and then let's go ahead, because we're billing. When is our billing for liquor licenses?
We, we start in, uh, January, but it really actually goes to, uh, the end of April, I think.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we have to be done by June.
I thought we had, uh, you know, be done like real quick. That gives us.
Well, in January and February, that, that's when all the letters go out, so really by February first, we have to have all the letters out to everybody telling them what they want.
Okay, so that's absolute deadline, got it. All right, Joe? We had one other item in that category.
Brings us to a discussion of intergovernmental agreement for Chicago Executive Airport.
No, I'm sorry, we had, uh, discussion of Plaza Drive, are we just going to?
Oh, yes, we have that up too, both of those items we have for discussion.
Well, this is, it is already a, an old story, we talked about Plaza Drive four, five years ago. What are we doing about Plaza Drive?
Well, the memo that was, uh, submitted to council from Director Peterson, uh, as it outlined, uh, the street's in, in, uh, rough shape, it's disassembling. The owners of the, uh, of the, uh, apartment association, uh, they'd like to, uh, move forward, uh, to, to reconstruct it and, and ultimately dedication to the city as a part of the city network. The other owner of the plaza, uh, has not agreed to that. Director Peterson offered perhaps this might be something to move the item along, which would be that where the city would handle some of the soft costs, such as, uh, legal, plating, things like this, if we're going to take over the, uh, over the driveway, that's estimated fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. So, we're looking for, we, we realize that the situation is becoming untenable. And it's also a street that people rely on, it's, it's a, uh, a connecting street from people that come off the Frontage Road to Apple Drive or so.
Uh, cost of the street?
Uh, I think, uh.
Is it the one sixty?
Yeah, I think that was, uh, Engineer Perez's estimate. And it is a, a bit more expensive, because at this point it would require reconstruction, the base work would be needed, as well as, uh, probably about six, six inches or more of asphalt, so.
All right, questions on that issue, Alderman Ludwicksen?
Uh, just, this is a maintenance issue, if, if they're not compliant, we need to notice both of the owners, like we would any other property.
Well, there's six owners, uh, on one side and one owner on the other side.
Correct.
Fine. I, I think we've had ongoing dialogue with all of them, but I don't think anybody has.
Right.
Said, "You're gonna get a fine, or you're gonna get penalized," or something, so we can move to that point. But, uh, they're ready to go if we cover the legal costs at this point.
Everybody's ready to go?
Yeah.
I thought they weren't.
Well, PABCOR, that was a requirement that we handle, the legal costs and other things.
Okay.
And that's when they were here. If they're not in agreement, then what's your next step?
I'm all for if we've gotta expend up to twenty thousand dollars on doing legal and, and, you know, recording fees and charges and survey work to do that.
All right, so not to exceed twenty, and anything over that, they pay, how's that?
It works for me.
What were the estimated costs, what was the estimated cost proportion of fifty?
Almost two hundred thou, well, on the whole project?
Forty soft costs you're talking about?
Fifty-eight thousand.
So it's fifty-eight thousand, and you're approving up to twenty?
Joe, you just gave us something.
That's correct, that's, because that's what Director Peterson had, had requested, was authorization up to about twenty thousand dollars for, uh, some of the legal work, plating, not, not engineering, I don't believe he referenced engineering, I'm sorry, I don't have the memo in front of me, but I don't think he was asking for fifty thousand, I think it was twenty thousand.
I thought what I read said he wanted engineering, or the soft costs included engineering, the fifty-eight thousand number, so, pretty close to what I remember. You have to record those soft costs.
The soft cost total is fifty-eight thousand.
Yeah, and that doesn't measure the twenty that Kat's talking about.
We can table this until Director Peterson comes back.
No, 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 we, just because it got, it's got sheet, we don't table it, let's work this out and let's get moving with it.
Well, we can still limit it to twenty thousand, or whatever else you want.
What do you mean?
Our share. Yeah. We can just take it back and say, "We're gonna pay twenty grand, rest is your problem," see what happens.
And then we fall back into this, they don't move on anything. You know, I understand that you're saying, "Well, we've been having dialogue with them, and this has been going on for several years." Obviously, the dialogue we're having in, in non-enforcement isn't working, so we need to either do something, make the contribution, or start holding them liable for their non-performance.
Well, that's exactly what Alderman Ludwicksen said, so let's do that.
Joe, didn't one of your administrative reports or something mention that the fire department had concerns about the road with their trucks driving over it as well?
They, they do, uh, the, the, uh, the single frame trucks that they have, they're concerned if they hit a pothole or something, there'd be some damage to it.
Are they gonna dedicate the street to us after this, or no?
That would be the goal, yes, absolutely. And that's what conversations we've had with both, uh, ownership groups has been, that you, you've, you bring the street up to an acceptable standard by the subdivision code of the city, and then it becomes eligible for dedication.
Okay, and is this a complete reconstruction?
Yes.
Okay, to make a minimal investment in a complete reconstruction that we can overlay twenty years from now relatively inexpensively, I think it's in our best interest to just get it done.
So, so you'd support the twenty thousand dollar?
Personally, I'd support the fifty-eight.
I was just gonna say, so you're not putting a limit on it, you're not limiting it to twenty thousand?
I'm, I'm one of five opinions here, so.
All right, so we have twenty on one end and fifty-eight on the other, what am I bid? What am I bid?
So, a person.
Alderman Ludwixson, are you willing to raise your bid?
Well, you know, I, I mean, we are going to take it over. We're going to manage the project no matter who pays for it because we're not going to let them.
Right.
They're capable of doing that themselves. I'm not, I'm not opposed to raising it, but it didn't sound like PABCor was even willing to move on this thing, so.
And that's what I read, too.
Well, I don't think we offered them anything. We didn't give them that.
It's my understanding that the last meeting I was at, they, they expressed reluctance.
Okay, and it, it's not the first time we've gotten reluctance from PABCor in something, so.
I mean, I think if we offer to pay the soft costs, which is three times the twenty thousand that Alderman Ludwixson was proposing, that that's generous and if we're able to fine them, then we'll just have to fine them and end up making the money to redo it anyway. They don't want to.
All right, Alderman Rosenthal?
Let me understand if we make them an offer, whatever that dollar amount is, and they refuse. We have not, have we given up any of our authority to fine them for non-compliance? What's the answer? We still have the.
I, I don't believe so. There might be a legal point to that, but.
I, I thought it was a legal question, that's why I'm asking, probably referencing to the attorney whether we've given up anything by doing that.
No, I think you're fine.
Okay. So, we make them an offer, be it twenty thousand or something in between?
Let's not do that. Let's go to them and say, "What do you want to get this thing done?" You know, they may say, "You pay us, we pay us." We don't know the answer to that yet. Then we can at least determine what we can make them an offer, how much of an offer we can make.
Well, I thought we wanted to move it a little quicker.
I thought we already, I thought we already did that.
Huh?
I thought we already did that.
We offered them anything yet, Joe?
And that's what Joe's report was.
No, we have not, we offered, made an offer, no.
Joe has indicated that maybe that's something would move things along, but there was no dollar, to my knowledge or Joe's knowledge, offered to PABCor to go along with the problem, with the program. So, let's do that. Let's do it tomorrow.
Joe, was the apartment complex aware of the cost of the two hundred thousand dollars?
The other.
When they said they were willing to pay their half, were they aware of the two hundred thousand dollar, two fifty price tag?
I believe so.
We already have half the money there already, so why?
Solicited.
Why are we going to PABCor and saying, "You pay less"? If, if we have half that say yes, I'm sure we could put the pressure on the other half to jointly take care of their problem of that road. I mean, we're already patching it on our own, for God's sake. They're not, they're not even taking care of it. So, if we already got half, you know, the mayor being a negotiator, you know that we've got half the party is agreeing already. You know, we're going to insert ourselves as the one percent and say, "Now we've got the majority, let's get this done and force PABCor to do it." We can't play around with them trying to, to, you know, pull another five grand out of our pocket. Half of them are ready to go. This is a city problem, it's a public safety issue, let's move forward.
Yes.
Maybe we get the written agreement with the apartment complex that they're willing to pay the half and they understand that the cost is going to be in the two hundred fifty thousand dollar range, we go to PABCor saying, "Your partners are willing to go."
That's an excellent point. Do we have any documents to give the other half, to give to the other half? So, here, sign this, we've got to move this thing on. Have we done anything like that?
No, we have not.
Okay, why don't we start with that? We're not start with, but I mean, to make that part of this process here.
I think that's the best way to do it. Just throw it in front of them and say, "Sign this, let's go."
Memo of understanding of.
Well, let the legal council do whatever is the right thing to do. Good. Good. Joe?
Any other points on Plaza Drive? So, just the, so staff has come for, I understand we have authorization for twenty thousand?
No.
No?
The trustler is going to go ahead and draft up a document.
Memo.
That says, you know, let, let's get moving.
A joint document, made to both people, PABCor and the apartment people, lay out these costs, these are the estimated costs of two fifty. If you want to see this move forward, send it back to us. When we get at least half of it, then we can then decide what our next step is to get the other half to move.
If they're not in compliance, I would maybe make them aware that if this doesn't move forward, that we will start enforcing it by fining or, I think I write something about taking them to court, whatever we need to do.
There's two ways.
If we're not informed, then I would just do it. I mean, we've been talking about this for years.
And I would.
Definitely do it, just do it.
I don't agree with the mayor.
You don't have to go tell them we're going to sue you.
Not going to ask them permission to enforce it.
Right.
It's time to take out, it's time to take out the ticket book.
All right.
We, and we do have the item, a discussion of intergovernmental agreement for Chicago Executive Airport.
That's one, if I could, you can start in this, but that's one I don't like. I don't like the way it's written. I don't like what their goal is. Their goal is to hire, be able to hire and fire the executive Jamie Abbott job and maybe they should have that authority, but it's your decisions. That's my objection to the thing. The rest of the stuff is not much different than what they had.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I totally concur with what you just said and I'm in agreement with it. I cannot vote for this agreement as it stands.
Okay. And I, I have to add something personal. I took a lot of heat for Dennis Ralove being terminated and I had nothing to do with it and I don't want anything to do with them to have anything to do with it. People here in the council should do things like that.
Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with that one line, that one red line item of the IGA is the one item I will not agree with either. The rest of it I'm totally fine with.
All right. Anybody else?
I agree with Scott's comment.
I agree. As do I. I agree with that as well.
So, can we give direction to go back to the board? Tell them that's the one item we don't agree with and get that in front of them tomorrow and let them make their changes or plead their case?
Yes, in my opinion.
Joe?
I'll, I'll contact tomorrow, correct.
Be interesting, you have a new chairman there, so see how he handles. It'd be good.
So, is that the end of that one? We can pull that one off?
We'll have four in two years. What's next?
Those are the business items. Other than that, we have coming up warrants.
Total expenses for this period of two hundred ninety-three thousand eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents, nine one twenty seventeen payroll posting of a hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred sixteen dollars and one cent, August Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund payment of seventeen thousand one fifty-nine point ten cents, and police pension payments, seventy-five thousand eighty-five dollars fifty-eight cents, total warrants, five hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents.
Motion approved as presented.
So, move. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, further discussion. Where being none, let's have Avril call.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.